See anything? There goes the flickering. And. Double checking, Andy, are you on? Not yet. Okay, so stand by Naomi and we'll start the meeting when Andy jumps in, we will recognize him as present. We just did a test around six thirty, so we know he's coming. So on that note, we will start the meeting. Good evening and welcome to the March sixteenth, twenty twenty Merrimack School Board Meeting. Board members Andy Schneider and Naomi Schoenfeld will be participating tonight via conference call. The meeting proceedings will follow RSA ninety-one dash A colon two, which states that all parties must be contemporaneous, must contemporaneously be able to hear and speak to each other. The meeting should be audible to the public. All persons present must be identified and all votes must be taken by roll call vote. Uh Naomi, I'll start with you. Uh why, why is your attendance not reasonably practical?
Um, the current medical emergency in our country.
Okay, where are you located?
In Merrimack.
And are you in the presence of anyone?
I'm not.
Thank you. Uh Andy, I heard you jump on. Um Board Member Schneider, why is your attendance not reasonably practical?
Uh due to current uh risk factor of me being over sixty, I felt it was best to stay at home this evening and participate this way.
Thank you very much. Where are you located?
My home in Merrimack in Hampshire.
And are you in the presence of anyone?
Nope.
Thank you very much. So with that, I will start the meeting. So if you could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And um Andy, just so you know, Andy and Naomi, just so you know, we have Jo- uh student rep Johanna Caroma. We have Board Member Brandy Nunez, Vice Chair Sendigual Yumi here, I am here, Superintendent Mark McLaughlin, Assistant Superintendent John Fabrizio and Assistant Superintendent for Business Matt Chevanel, all at the table. Um so with that, we will get the meeting started. Item number two is public participation. Anyone from the public that would like to speak, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will close public participation. We're on to item number three, which is update on school district response to coronavirus, and I turn it over to you, Mark.
Thank you. Uh well, um as anyone who's turned on the television in the last couple of weeks knows, we are in the middle of um something really unprecedented uh in our country. As I was actually um driving just a few minutes ago, I looked around and this um it sort of reminds me a little bit about the way the country felt after nine eleven. It just is different right now. Um and this is the only other time in my lifetime that I can recall a situation like this. So um it's extraordinary and um the uh fact is that right now um all schools and all school districts in the state and around the country are really facing something that they've never really had to face before. And what that requires is a level of um planning and engagement also that we've never really had to do before. Um that's coupled by an environment where things are changing by the, literally by the minute. So I've been trying to keep the community apprised of uh of updates and things that we're trying to do. Um and I sometimes worry about that because I know sooner it might put out a message than something uh might happen in the world that would contradict a message that I just sent out. And I'm hoping that people understand um that um events are changing dramatically. For instance, just a little while ago, uh I understand that um bars and restaurants were closed to um eat in business and instead just for takeout. Um that happened just minutes after the governor was on television and didn't mention anything about that. So um things really are changing uh fluidly. I also just want to make one point here. Um it's very, very important. The decision to close schools, which we made on Friday prior to the governor's announcement on Sunday, was made because uh many superintendents, particularly in the south central region, felt very strongly that it was in the best interest of our community and our students um to do that. However, uh we also recognized then, as we recognize now, that we still have an obligation to our students to provide the best instruction we, we can in a remote, in a remote way. Um I guess I'll share just a little bit of frustration tonight with um what I think is a lack of a coordinated message coming from um the DOE and Concord, if I could just say. And the reason I say that is because what's happening right now is that um we're getting messages that say that you can't congregate in groups uh larger than ten. And yet, we have direction right now from the DOE that um teachers should report to school tomorrow to plan preparations for remote learning, which we are planning to do. But I absolutely want to make it clear that that's a directive from the DOE and the governor uh that that is to happen. So um this is not a decision that an individual superintendent can um take on his or her own to stop remote learning, because that is the expectation of the governor and the um Department of Ed. So if people are wondering, is there a bit of a contradiction? There is. I recognize that completely. Um so uh what we are doing, and that may well change by the time we get out tonight. But right now, we are planning um to provide remote instruction to our students. And today was a day where our district leaders met with our building leaders to develop um not to develop, because we've been doing that, but to put more or less finishing touches on the plan for that delivery. Today was also a day where our custodial staff um worked in each building to ensure that our schools were cleaned and sanitized so that the schools would be safe places, as safe as can be, um for our teachers to come in tomorrow to begin their work of putting the final touches on the plans for remote learning that in Merrimack are scheduled to start on Wednesday. Just yesterday, the governor and the commissioner said that we had a week for this planning, but Merrimack has made a commitment to start on Wednesday. So we're going to stay true to that, even though uh this, the governor and the commissioner have made it possible for uh other districts to uh plan through next Monday. Um so what we want to talk to you a little bit about today um is what happened today um with our administrative team. Uh John's going to lead that conversation, because he led that initiative today. Um and then, of course, tomorrow, uh we're going to provide more details about the rollout of that, how that's going to look logistically, how that's going to look. And I also want to just remind everyone again that everything that we say tonight is based on the situation as we are operating under tonight, and it may well change. So we're trying to be very fluid and flexible. Um so what John's going to share with you uh is, is, is the status of things, the way they are now. Um and then after that, we're going to invite Heather Barker, our Director of Student Services, who's going to speak directly about some of our efforts around planning for the delivery of um special education. And so we're going to do that, and um then I'll have just a few other words uh about other kind of logistical things and take any questions that um the board may have. So with that, I'm going to just turn to John, and I'm going to ask you, John, to just to describe uh uh our day with the administrative team.
Thank you. Um as Mark said, this was a uh a new undertaking in a lot of ways, because um really um the ground beneath us shifted so many times as we began this work. And where we were in one place on Friday when we met for four hours, um to where we were when we met all day today. And I think that um what we've done is um I put some parameters to it. We started this morning. I said, I need us to get ready for a plan between now and Friday, and that's when our plan really is. What can we provide that we can put out to families after tomorrow that gets us through Friday and then begin the process to the week following? And that's kind of where we are right now, because things are shifting so rapidly that to plan two, three, four weeks out, we don't know where we're going to be at that point. So we said, what is our plan today? Where will we start? So um things we have to provide. We have to provide educational opportunities, and this comes from Commissioner Edelblum's um address yesterday. So educational opportunities for students that have um rigor to them, that can maintain the rigor of our classroom and the ability to have something that we will assess, and that's very broad in what that means. So we took that to say, okay, for us in Merrimack, what can we accomplish? Um knowing that we um yet don't know the um technology capabilities of our students at our elementary school, because it's not something that they typically use when it comes to Power School and our platforms that we have at that level. So we began by talking about what will we do with the elementary school. And at the elementary school, pre-K through six, we'll use printed learning packets, or as the, as the commissioner referred them as analog education. And we will use these packets um to first include and get out to families with manipulatives, like readers, things that, materials that they will use to support their learning that they typically do every day in an elementary classroom. A lot more hands-on activities is what will be provided in, in that point. Um each day, we will ask the teachers to uh post the daily schedule, and we will ask them to have thirty minutes of reading, thirty minutes of writing, thirty minutes of mathematics, ten minutes of social emotional curriculum. Um and then um two times per week, we'll have thirty minutes of science and thirty minutes of social studies. And then um through the court, each day, you'll also have thirty minutes of Unified Arts. That's what it will encompass in their daily program. Um as I said, we will be providing um this in more of a packet form and a opportunity that I'll talk about in a few minutes to pick those up, and we'll talk about how that's going to start to unfold. At our secondary levels in grade seven through twelve, we're going to utilize Power School. They're very comfortable with this platform. We have information that the, um, a large majority of our students are familiar with this, able to use it at this level. And we will, we will design our lessons through that learning platform as our primary um instructional delivery model. Um those families that may have trouble with the technology, um Nancy Rose has worked with us in her office of Technology Library and Media, and those parents that may have needs or questions around technology. Um her number um will be included tomorrow in Mark's message, but for the public, six oh three, four two four, six two zero three. And that will, she will take um information in around technology and also um try so, with the limit number we have, try to support some families in their homes that may need that at the secondary level. Again, there will be thirty minutes dedicated to each of the subject areas, including the core content area classes such as in Unified Arts, World Language, Health and Physical Education. Some logistical things that we talked about today with the team. Um we talked about how will these physical packets get out to the families? And both all, the pre-K through six schools have um developed a schedule um that will happen on Wednesday, March eighteenth, and um that will be included tomorrow in Dr. McLaughlin's message. It's a pretty lengthy schedule, so I think not to, to read it here, but it will be uh just to queue up that um um it will be uh encompassing tomorrow in his message. At the middle and high school level, there'll also be some materials they'll need, especially those students who are in band and need the equipment for that. And there'll be some other materials for more of our um, you know, ongoing learning projects that are happening. There'll be some materials that have to be picked up, and they again will have a schedule that will come out tomorrow and, and a pretty lengthy message from uh Dr. McLaughlin that will include what they need to do at those times for that to happen. How will we assess and monitor the work throughout this process? Um teachers will plan materials that include assignments and opportunities for students to show their learning. We're working with our teachers tomorrow around this and looking at um the work we've done around universal design. We've done a lot of work to talk about how to show what you know in different ways. And, and that's what we're going to do, and we're going to utilize some technologies to make that happen. We're going to use, utilize some print materials, and we're going to find ways to, to um accomplish this through a lot of both learning through technology and learning through print. And that's uh where we are right now. Tomorrow morning, uh teachers will report to schools. They have assigned spaces. They'll be, again, keeping social distancing in mind. It's important to us that the health and the welfare, welfare of our teachers. And we're doing um everything we can to find ways to connect them and keep them together without physically putting them together. And that's a challenge, because our, our nature and our culture of teachers and educators is to meet on professional learning teams and on department head meetings and things like that. We're trying to honor the regulations around putting two people in the room together. So we're, we're learning a lot of technologies that group us together right now that typically we haven't. We're utilizing um Microsoft Office three sixty teams, and we're learning how to set up teams. And Nancy uh Rose and myself and, and I listened to a team spent some time today setting up those teams. So tomorrow, when they come in, they're able to utilize an online chatroom, things we haven't been accustomed to i- in our system. But we're growing and we're learning at a pretty fast clip to provide this by Wednesday, so we'll get it out. And then we're going to talk later in the week about kind of, okay, what's next week look like? And what will those um learning packets and when will we continue to move towards online learning? And that's where we want to get to more of a distance learning, that encompasses much more technology. But that has to grow over time, and our, and our district needs to um learn through this process to get there. We couldn't do it today, but we'll get there over the next weeks.
So if I could just add, uh so thank you, John. Appreciate that. That was a lot of work today, and I appreciate your, your guide and leadership on that. So just a couple of things. I want to be clear that we are not talking, you know, this board has talked about Blizzard bags in the past. And the reason that um I'll just say that I've resisted that notion is because a lot of times Blizzard bags are nothing more than worksheets that have no relevance to um, you know, contemporaneous curriculum. Uh they're just things to literally say, we had a little time to get, you know, that we dedicated, whether people actually even did it or not, and that you just check off you did, so you don't have to make up the day. I mean, if we're going to be real, that's what that is. Um we're not talking about that. We are talking about trying to provide um curriculum-based uh work and instruction to students that is aligned with where we would normally be in our school year. So this is not just a bunch of canned stuff that we're going to ship off to teachers. And so the reason, or to, to families, and the reason that I want to make that point is because in order to accomplish that, it's going to take, you know, a couple of additional days to scale up. So it would be easier to just print off some standard things and ship them out to people, but that's not what we're doing. So I want to be really clear about that. Um the other thing I just want to say about uh teachers coming to work, very mindful of that. We've put a lot of energy into creating safe, safety for our students and our families. But, you know, we have to remember that our teachers have families too, and some of them uh, you know, have children and family members that they're worried about as well. And so we have to be mindful uh that, you know, we're relying on them an awful lot right now to do a lot of, a lot. And so when we're asking our teachers to come to school, um we are, as John said, we're trying to ensure um proper distance. So we have to remember some of the things we know about COVID nineteen. One of the things, and there's a lot that we don't know, and I think that the nerve-wracking part is that it seems like the science is revealing new things every day. But what we know now is that the most likely mode of transmission is aerosol. So someone sneezes or coughs, um and in the absence of that, um uh if in a person is asymptomatic but has it, but if they're not coughing and sneezing, then the likelihood of transmission is very low. So that's the reason that we've been advised to maintain uh social distance, right? So um we've eliminated, in the case of the high school, twelve hundred people. Uh in the case of our elementary schools, four, five, six hundred people every day. So when staffs uh arrive uh into their buildings uh tomorrow and for the days to come, um there is more than ample opportunity for them to make their way from their car into their classroom, which will have been cleaned and will be, and will be cleaned and sanitized multiple times daily by our staff and at, you know, night as well, by our custodial staff. Um and, and um they can uh do the work that they need to do in their classroom and never interact with anybody face to face, or except maybe down the hall, they'll come out in the hall. I mean, these are the practical things we have to think about. If you need to talk to somebody, hey, how are you planning X? There's a way to do that that maintains the social distance that's required, and we also have technology which certainly can support that. So I don't want the board or anybody in the community to be under the impression that we're being careless with our teachers. We are not. We have a very difficult situation right now in that we are required to provide education to students and want to do it, and teachers are the ones to do that. And they can't do that to the degree that they need to do it, all from home. Teachers have a, just a different uh responsibility. Their jobs are different. So we're working very, very hard to make sure that our, our um, their workspaces are safe spaces. And I would point out, sometimes I think there's sort of it's kind of this idea that, you know, schools are the, you know, the, sort of the the hotbed for, you know, uh disease caring. Well, without students, that's much less so. But there is no uh difference. I'm assuming that people still go grocery shopping and uh get gas and interact with neighbors in a way, and you will still, you will, whatever you do in those contexts, you'll do in school. So um, you know, we have to just make sure that people understand uh what their responsibilities are, and I know that they do and will. Um but I want to just reassure the board and, and the public listening, and most importantly, our teachers, we really do care about them. And um we recognize the work that they have in front of them, and uh we want to be supportive of their needs to maintain their own safety while still serving the needs of our students. So um I wonder at this point, Heather, if you could just come up and just uh share with um the board some of the work that you've done around um preparation for remote learning for special ed.
Sure. Good evening. Heather Barker, Director of Student Services for Merrimack School District. How we are going to, as a special education team, uh plan around uh addressing the needs of our students with disabilities uh and adhere to the rules and regulations around um schools and COVID nineteen. And as they said earlier, this is very fluid and changing on a daily basis, but the information here came directly from the governor's press conference yesterday afternoon and again uh by Commissioner Edelblut this afternoon. The New Hampshire DOE regarding the education of students with disabilities during this extended period of remote learning wants school districts to consider the following. So for students on IEPs, we have three options. All of the state, all of the special ed teams across the state by school district have three options. One is, or a combination of the three, remote learning. So there are students who have IEPs who will be able to access the remote learning in their uh homes through their general ed teachers and special ed teachers working together collaboratively to make that learning accessible and differentiated for those learners. So that part of it, there will be a subgroup of students for whom that would work. Uh the second is that as of this moment, and this could change, uh the commissioner and the governor are still advocating that school teams could have small cohorts of students in groups of mo- no more than one to five students working together, coming into the school for direct instruction or direct services. That's an option that is still available. The third if, is if A is not available or not appropriate for a specific student and their special education needs, or B is not available or impossible to deliver, in other words, having kids come into the building um to work with students, then school districts are able to later provide compensatory education. So those are the three options that the state is sanctioning for special education right now. Merrimack is going to make its best effort to support all children during this closure and work to maintain skills for students. So we're going to look at all three of those and figure out what's the right one for each individual student. How we're going to do that? We're going to go slow, and then actually, as we develop the skill sets of the professionals who are working to support our students in a remote way, which is a big change in practice, um we're going to start with the remote learning part. So tomorrow and Wednesday, our special education teachers will work side by side with their general education peers, their colleagues, and their goal, along with parent professionals, would be to design, to adapt, to ma- uh modify what's going to be provided for all students in the general curriculum, so that students with disabilities have lots of access, some access, some type of access to those learning opportunities. So that would be the goal initially. The reason for that, one, we want to make sure that for that broad group of students with disabilities that we are ensuring they have some access to, and again, it's going to be along a continuum, dependent on the needs of a student and how, and the level of support at home, uh for them to access, knowing that right now, this is a brand-new platform. The professionals aren't really sure how we can use this. We can, you know, sort of scale this up as we build the capacity of our educators and service providers to think about remote other kinds of things besides just learning opportunities. But right now, that's the first goal. Thursday and Friday, we're going to have our special education folks working with the related service providers and contract service providers, and their job will be to explore, if it's still available onsite, and or remote service delivery for our students with regard to the specialized instruction and related services such as therapies, OT, speech and language, things like that. Okay? Additionally, beginning this week, we will be reaching out to families of our students with disabilities to determine the appropriate means to deliver those individualized supports and education, those related services, and families' access to technology through the IEP process. So we're going to actually, my goal this week would be to help support our special ed coordinators in our s- uh schools so that they can work with their special ed teams as we start moving forward to actually host remote meetings, conference calls, et cetera, with families to problem solve this. And instead of coming out with sort of a blanket, here's what we're going to do for everybody, we're going to try to individualize this to families, their unique dynamics, needs, their children's needs, and their needs for technology, which we perhaps could be providing if families needed access, et cetera. So the goal would be to use the special education process to support our children and families in Merrimack. Together, we're going to seek to creatively make the best of this challenging set of circumstances by working directly with our families through the IEP process to determine the what and the how. In terms, and I'm sure there's some families that are thinking about, okay, um my student has really complex needs uh around a specific thing, and it may not be able to be replicated without having human beings with my child supporting them. So we recognize, as the state does, that there potentially will be compensatory education, that IEP teams will convene and determine are appropriate. If your child, and this is true, there have been teams that have already convened and determined that some children already are eligible for extended school year. So this is just a possible model, would be that the extended school year might go for longer in the day, might have more intensive supports, et cetera, based on whatever an IEP team would decide, or go for longer, more weeks in the summer. That's one option. Uh another is if your child, it's not all, hope is lost if your child was deemed not able to access extended school year, you absolutely could bring that up to the school team as your s- school team starts to discuss how we're going to implement your child's IEP remotely. And those students we may determine, I'm sure we will determine, there are other students who will absolutely be eligible for extended school year or other extended school day opportunities once school starts again. So this is evolving this piece, but we recognize our role and responsibility to our students, and this will all be done on an individual basis by the IEP team with families and guardians. That's the Merrimack plan. These contingent plans are designed to support your child's individualized education and to uh provide them with access to an appropriate education. And we're acknowledging right now that this educational planning will occur through the IEP team process, and nothing about these plans are intended to supplant or reduce the individualized educational planning for your child. So there's not going to be some sort of canned or blanket, here's what we're going to do. It's going to be done through this process, so I can't say that enough. And it may feel initially like it's slow- And it may feel initially like it's slow to start up, but the goal there is so that we don't do things in a poor way or pretend that we can do things that we don't know how to do yet. So that's, that's the approach we're going to take.
And Heather, can you just clarify, when you, IEP is Individual Education Plan.
Yes.
So when you're talking about the IEP team, one of the member, well, the imperative members of the IEP team are parents and are guardians, correct?
Absolutely. In all of the IEP process, a parent receives both notice and must give consent to any decision made about their child.
Thank you.
So I'm sure you have a lot of questions, and, and we're happy to address some. So please.
Okay. So we'll open it up, starting with Cindy.
Can you tell me how we're handling students that are on free and reduced lunch? And has the governor given any recommendations on that? Or do we have any, or how are we planning to handle it?
Mm-hmm. So I'll turn to Matt in a second about that. What I'll say is that we've spent a lot of time with Dave Zieke today. Dave Zieke is our Food Services Director. And so there's been some, and I understand, I mean, you know, we get it. But there's been some conflicting information coming from some state and federal agencies around that. So for instance, on Saturday, there was a reflection that, from the state that, or information rather, from the state that said that there was a waiver that we could apply for that would allow us to provide food to all students, regardless of free and reduced. So that would be one thing. And then that was upended on Sunday with a back to, you, we, you might only be able to provide food to students on free and reduced lunch. And that currently is the state affairs. So what Dave, as of, he was planning to come tonight if there was any last minute, late breaking news and share that with you, but there isn't. I expect that there will be more information tomorrow. So I don't have more to tell you about that right now. I only tell you that Dave and Matt stand ready, as, you know, as we all do, to, to follow whatever, whatever guideline we're given on that and to provide the board, and, and I understand that the board has made themselves available for emergency meetings in the past, and normally we don't need them. But this, that particular issue might be one where we would ask the board to reconvene in an emergency session to address that very issue. Right now, there would be nothing concrete for the board to act on tonight because it's very, very fluid. But we want to take advantage of anything that we're offered. And, and then maybe, depending on, on the board's thought, maybe go over and above. But at the moment, there's, there would be no action for the board to take.
Is that expected to resolve soon or to get?
I think expected is, has a different definition now than I would say. I think that certainly the, the state folks recognize the imperative of coming to answers about this quickly. And I have no doubt that they are dealing with, you know, issues that they have to deal with in order to get us answers. So I say, do I expect it? Yes, because I think everybody knows that, you know, starting now, people are going to start wondering about that. So I, I expect that there will be. But like I said, Saturday, there was one thing that we thought we were acting on. Sunday, that was completely contradicted. And today, we have no, no further information. So we'll, as I've been trying to say in communications, as soon as there's something known and actionable, we'll share it with the public. And in this particular case, it might be that, like I say, it requires board action, in which case I'll ask for the board to convene.
Okay. And I would say too, if there's anything we can do to be proactive, if it's taking the state too long or if we need to consider what we need to do as a district. I mean, we have funds aside to support those kids. We're not supporting them. And if we need to authorize expenditures or something, gift cards, or I don't know what options might exist, or even ask the public. I mean, creatively speaking, someone suggested this to me today, like under a GoFundMe. You know, to, if anyone wanted to donate money to help some of those families that are on free and reduced lunch, would we consider doing something like that? So I would say if we can keep that as a high priority, I'm sure it is just across the board. You know, a lot of concerns for those families that really depend on us for sustenance. And, and that's important for immune systems and all sorts of other things. So I, hopefully, we can, I'm more than willing to meet on any moment's notice or whatever makes sense.
So I, I really appreciate that. And I, I want to just say that among many things is what makes Merrimack, and I'm sure other communities, not Merrimack doesn't have the lock on good people. But, but, you know, I have certainly, people have reached out to me and offered similar things. And so it's one of the many reasons that makes Merrimack special, because people are really concerned about their neighbors and their friends and children. And so I know that that's true. And the question is, what are we allowed to do? And what do we have discretion to do without, without, you know, asking? And that's the thing that's being sorted out right now. I will tell you that among our conversations with Dave today, we have already began, began, we've already begun to talk about distribution possibilities should we get the go-ahead, the green light. And so it, the good news is that whenever we get a green light and/or whenever the board would be asked to take some sort of action, we won't need to scale up that because Dave is already working on that plan or multiple plans of delivery based on what we're able to provide. So he is ready, you know, for that.
My next thing I wanted to ask was, as it relates to the presentation that you provided, I'm wondering if we can put that on our website, even with the disclaimer that, you know, things are rapidly changing. And as it stands, as of this date, this time, this is how we're going. It may change in the future. I think that disclaimer makes perfect sense as we've heard several times tonight. But if we could get that out there for some of the families to be able to view, that would be helpful. Along the same line, you know, I, if, I don't know if we have this on our page right now or that the notice that we're giving updates. But is there any direction that we can give our community, our families, is if they have questions, if we need to direct them to different places? If you have questions about your special ed or your, your student services for your child, contact here. And I wonder if we can at least triage some of those questions, consolidate and triage in the most sensible way on how the district wants to receive that kind of information. If you have questions, you know, from the public that just have questions about the community or media or, you know, anything like that, that I think if we can get that out on our website, because people do know that that's there and they are looking at it. And I think that that would be helpful, just a suggestion.
No, I appreciate it. I'm ready, we're ready to do that tomorrow in tomorrow's message. Because once we begin to roll out, there will be understandably a cascade of questions. And what I said in my message, a recent message, was that I understand the impulse for people to call me or to email me or John or Matt. But the fact is that the volume would make it impossible to reply to individuals. So, but what, that doesn't mean that people don't have valid questions. And so for that reason, we're prepared. So for instance, Nancy, John mentioned Nancy's number tonight. That will be a resource for people wishing to access technology. You know, the resources that we have, but do it confidentially. And so we're going to be producing other of those contact informations that, that will be shared in a message tomorrow afternoon.
Okay, that's great. And then speaking of technology, as it relates to Power School, for example, is that an installed product or is it in the cloud?
Yeah. Power School, we have on our own server, and it's backed up on the cloud.
And, and we feel that we have enough server space to accommodate extra use?
It's a web-based product anyway. So yes, there is enough.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right, great. Thank you. I think that those were my top questions for right now.
Okay, Brandi, you had your hand up, and I will go to you on the phone after this to make sure you're all covered.
So going back to the Free and Reduced Food Challenge, have we received any calls or any concerns from individual families currently that are in need? And if so, have we been able to provide anything to them thus far? Or have we not gone?
So, so today is the first day of no school in this new context. So today, I did not. What makes Merrimack good, great, is that a lot of people think of their homeschool first. So what I can't tell you for sure is that questions like that haven't been directed to the home schools. However, I met, we didn't have administrative assistance today. And I, we were with the principals and assistant principals all day. So whether such calls were directed to the school and therefore left as voicemail messages, I don't know. What I can anecdotally tell you is that principals have been receiving numbers of inquiries from their families. And I am not aware, doesn't mean it didn't happen, I want to be careful, but I am not aware of any of those principals having received questions about food, free and reduced, whatever, as of today.
Okay, perfect. If we were to have any prior to an actual plan rolling out, would we be able, would we be in a position to handle each one case by case until we had a full plan and approach for all of those? And I struggle because I don't know the amount of students that are on the free and reduced plan. But if we don't have a plan figured out between now and let's say Thursday, but there were families that were calling in, I just would want to do something for individual families as they came to their homeschool or called you guys, to be able to be, you know, feeding them and making sure that they are, that their needs, their needs are met.
So again, I appreciate that. What I, what I want to, and again, Matt, if you want to add to this, please do, because you know far better than I do. But this is the part, there are so many parts of my day recently where I have walked up that, walked that line between compassion and the business part of this. So this is that. This is an example of that. The, the distribution of food in a public school environment is trickier than it might seem. Because we have, as you know, we have guidelines about the numbers of vegetables and the numbers of, and it's all prescribed because we have federal support for those programs. So anything that we do with foodstuffs that come from that source, federal, we cannot make, make ad hoc decisions about, about what gets given or how it gets distributed. Likewise, if the community chose, out of the goodness of its heart, to provide food to folks, what the district could do would be to work with them and facilitate. However, it could not be under the auspices of the school district. That's just the hard fact. What we can do, and this is the part where the board might, might provide guidance, and we might ask the board to provide guidance, is the, the kinds of foodstuffs that we might, we might be able to provide absent federal-produced or federally provided goods, but that, but that we vet through other sources and so on. And that's the thing that I think we might be coming to you relatively soon about. But we need some guidance and some clarity because this is an area where we could do a, think we're doing a good thing and run afoul of lots and lots of other things. So the law of unintended consequences applies here. So I think, and that's, that's a hard thing to say because the impulse is do what's right for your neighbor. However, schools, as you know, are under lots and lots of constraints. And we just have to, you know, we have to be mindful of those.
And can I just ask a clarifier on that? And that is, when you're talking about things that you can and can't do when it comes to that with distribution of foods, FERPA probably falls into that a bit as well too, correct?
Correct.
So it's about Student Privacy Act, and it's federally, it's a federal mandate. It's not, you know, it's not a local regulation. So Student Privacy Act, I know I've asked a lot of questions about food insecurity in my budget questions. And it's all about, some of the questions couldn't be answered in the way that they may have been asked because of student privacy issues.
Absolutely. So to put a fine point on that, what we could never do is say, and, you know, in fact, the, even who is on free and reduced is necessarily not known by many people. I would have no idea. But what we could never do is say, all students on free and reduced lunch, come at two o'clock today to pick up your food. Because the only people who would come would be those people, and they would, they would be self-identifying. And, and we could not contribute to a situation where that could happen. So these are all the things that might not be well-known to the public. And it might be frustrating to say, well, my gosh, why all this red tape? Just do it. But that's the reality that, you know, that we live in. So I appreciate that that gets raised, not for lack of compassion, but there are just, you know, those things that we need to be mindful of. Matt, did you want to just?
Yeah, I just want to chime in a little bit. You know, when the superintendent says the red tape, he's, he's not saying that in a, in a light, casual fashion. Because even the cashiers at the registers, when a student swipes their ID, they don't know if it's a free meal or a reduced meal or a paid meal. All they know is yes, it's passed. And now if you're looking to provide services to free and reduced, and you're looking to provide services to those who are not and to charge a nominal fee for that, then you'd have to have somebody outside the school in an area giving them limited access. And they would have to have a list of names and take the time to look up. And it, it just becomes a lot more work than it really is necessary. And it really hurts us on the privacy standpoint. So while we wait for the USDA, plus USDA commodities that we get, we get sandwich meat, we get whatever, we could not use that to provide non-paid meals to everyone. You know, so that's another thing that's tricky also. They keep track of that. But the main thing is the privacy. How do you make sure, and if you're going to try and get a free or reduced meal that qualifies, you have to, as Mark said, you have to make sure it has X, Y, Z and everything like that, when all you really want to do is provide a couple of sandwiches and an apple and an orange, and that's it. But that wouldn't qualify as a free or reduced meal because you're not having a milk or anything else with it. You have to add that in there. So the whole thing becomes kind of a rat's nest when you bring in the, the federal government. Now, if the board, and I don't even know if we can do this, if the board, depending upon what the need is, and we haven't assessed the need. I've looked on our Facebook page, and I've read the posts there. And I've gotten a couple of emails that people are concerned about what you're talking about. No one has said to me specifically, I really need this service. But people have expressed the feeling that this is something that they would like to see go forward. But we still haven't done like a needs assessment. If we ramp up to do 300 meals without first having assessed what's the participation going to be, then we're putting the cart before the horse. So you have a couple of decisions to make, you know. As, as Mark said, you know, you have to either wait for the federal government to come through and say, here's, here's your rules and regulations. First, there was a waiver, then there wasn't a waiver. And then the waiver was only for those who are over 50% free and reduced. We're not even near that at all. And so there's a lot of red tape. But, you know, the board could discuss various options. And we even have to check with the state to see if we could go forward with those options of providing the sandwich with an apple and that's it, you know, which is not a regular meal that we could serve reimbursable or not reimbursable because we have to meet nutritional standards.
And that, so Matt just said that very well. And that, meaning those options, are, is the substance of what we might And that, meaning those options, are, is the substance of what we might wish to bring to the board relatively soon, once we get clarity about, you know, where we stand. Because there are options and Matt will certainly, we can, you know, talk about them when the time is ready.
One of the challenges from my perspective relative to all of the unknown with this is that what is or was as of Friday is drastically going to change. Meaning, all of a sudden, people aren't having income. They're, you know, if there's, depending on, if they're a server and now bars and restaurants are closed and that was their income, what was on Friday for free and reduced, all of a sudden can shift and change. And I've been really pleased with our approach and trying to be as proactive with all of this as possible. And this is one area that I, I feel is going to really hit home quick. People, if you don't have income, there's going to be more and more children that are going to qualify for that free and reduced. The duration of time that this continues, to be honest, right now, we've got three weeks. But that could change. So I think there's so much to this that is as fluid as it could possibly be. And that concerns me from the standpoint of we need to approach, in my opinion, approach the free and reduced meals with a different perspective. Meaning, if we had 10 on Friday, as of, you know, three o'clock on Friday, we very well could have 50 to 100 by the time this is all over. How do we address those children without having them necessarily fill out the forms and go through all of the red tape or whatever needs to happen during this time of uncertainty? On top of that, how do we address those students that are, I know we had a certain amount of homeless students. How can we support them during this time as well? What, what are their needs and how can we as a district ensure that they are, that those needs are being met? So I, I realize that we as a district need to ensure that we're following laws and regulations. And I know that we are definitely constricted by those. But that being said, I'd like to see what we can do to force the issue with the higher ups to say, here's our situation, here's where we are, and request some modifications to the DOE. Or request input in, you know, we can't be the only district that's experiencing this. So working with other districts to help them understand the severity of our situation. And if it's happening here, it more than likely is going to happen in a different district, which makes it a state issue. So I, I just would ask that we can be creative. I, this is definitively out of my wheelhouse, but it definitely concerns me enough to say I'm, I'm in. And whatever support I can give you, I'm more than willing to, to spend some time surrounding this.
I think I've met, and then Mark.
Do you mind, boss?
Absolutely.
If I go first? You hit the nail right on the head. And I hadn't thought about it that way before you said what you said. Less than an hour and a half before we came here, an entire industry was dismantled. The food service industry, you know, one that I partake of on Route 3 near Chuck Mower's place, up the road quite frequently, you know. They're not going to be open. And those people who I know and have come to really appreciate over the years are not going to have jobs. Now, they said they can collect unemployment, but how long is that process going to take? And then how long is the free and reduced application going to take to get processed for a short-term thing like this? And is it even going to be valid? I don't see a lot of detail on this. I don't see a lot of applications on these extenuating circumstances. So I think it's up for discussion to do perhaps a needs assessment. And then if we want to do it, we ask permission, can we? And then we do it and you commit a certain amount of funds for it.
And that, so thank you, I'm sorry. So thank you, Matt, because maybe this is the right time to talk just a little bit about options. I mean, we're dancing around it. So, so, so your point, Brandy, again, is well taken. I want to just make a, before we talk about options, I just want to clarify a few things. So it sometimes seems that schools, for some people, are the source of all the problems. And yet we're also the source of all the answers and we're the source of all the support. But then, so, I mean, it's, it's tricky. You know, I'm feeling right now the irony of some of this. So I just want to just point that out. The state has a role here. So we have to take the governor at his word, that unemployment benefits are going to be extended, that, you know, that, that childcare credits are going to be extended to families who are needing childcare. But this runs up against, you know, there's a little conflicting information here because we're trying to keep children away. But yet, you know, we have right now announcements that daycare centers are supposed to expand. So I'm not understanding, so, and I'm just, because what that means is that we cannot provide all the answers to the strains that will be placed on this community. What we can do, or any community for that matter, as a result of this. What we can do, however, and, and, you know, I was planning to, to speak about it later, but since we're on this, Matt just alluded, if we are not prevented, and we may still be prevented, but if we were not prevented from kind of going our own way, it would look something like this. We would ask the board, would you authorize? Well, actually, Matt, let me just, technically, you just say, we, we would authorize, ask the board to authorize a certain amount of funds dedicated to?
To providing free meals, let's say, however you want to phrase it, you know, once or twice, once or twice a day, from the general fund. You do a transfer from the general fund to the food service fund in support of this effort. And so instead of doing free and reduced, worrying about guidelines, everything like that, everybody who comes up gets a bag with some sustenance in it. And we don't have to worry about any of the red tape or anything like that. And we control our own destiny. So that would be an expenditure of funds from the general fund that you would authorize. Because it can't be, it, it can't be supported by the, the food service fund because they're not generating any revenue. So this would be something that the board would have to discuss and decide whether or not they want to go that route, if we could do that.
And the reason that we didn't bring it to the board tonight is because we don't know whether we can ask the board to even take that under consideration. Which is why I was alluding earlier, we may find out tomorrow that we can. And if we could, then I would contact Chair Barnes and ask whether she would agree to an emergency school board meeting that would provide the opportunity for the board to take that up and decide whether it wishes to authorize that transfer or not. So that's, so that's really the option that we'd be talking about. And right now, it didn't make sense to ask you to consider it, since you may take an action. And then we have to tell you tomorrow, because of X, Y, and Z, you can't do what you just said you wanted to do. So trust me that we will get back to you, because I hear you completely. As soon as we know what we are able to do, we will bring it to you. And you've made, you've made it clear to me over time that as needs arise, not just related to COVID-19, but in any case, if we need to meet, we'll meet. And so you've said that before and I assume you still mean that.
I think we do. And actually, I'm just going to take a poll on the phone. There's no reason we can't convene another emergency meeting this week based on your schedules? Andy and, and, you're good and Naomi?
Whenever and whatever's needed.
Thank you. And at the table, I think we have consensus that we can also convene at a moment's notice. So the only thing I would add to that thought is surplus. Because we always talk about, you know, supply and demand and whether surplus. The only other thing I would say is, you know, maybe talk to Chief Roy and her staff. Because we may have people of medically sensitive nature who are homebound. That if, if it's going to go to waste anyway and we're not under federal regulatory environments, then maybe we just make sure that no food goes to waste. That's all. So thinking out loud, not really, you know, playing to think out loud on this. But are there any other comments, Cindy? And then I'll go to the two on the phone.
Yeah, I would, I would just say too, that, you know, it sounds like we may want to leverage our state reps. You know, we have eight state reps and it sounds like, I don't know, maybe Dr. McLaughlin or Chair Barnes could reach out to them and ask for support at the state level. I'm sure they're paying attention to it anyways. But if we can just partner with them, all eight of them, to try to get the support that we need from them as well.
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
So you'll, you'll do it?
One has reached out to me. I just got an email, I think it may have been sent earlier today and I just saw it before coming to the meeting. And so I will reach out to that individual tomorrow and I will share a number of thoughts.
Okay, thank you.
Senator Chanley's been very responsive too, I think she'd be glad to help.
Absolutely.
Brandy?
If for some reason we are not able to, if we are constrained and things continue to kind of change and modify in the wrong direction for us, I, I am wondering what we can do on a private level. Meaning, share with the community what our restrictions and constraints are, but yet there is a need. And based on that, try and rally support. Because I think that there's enough of us in Merrimack that feel very strongly that children, no child should go hungry. And this is an area where I, I really do feel very strongly that we, as a district, can help and support our families in this way at a minimum. Because this is so, I mean, this is totally uncharted territory for all of us. And I just feel very strongly that all of our children should have nourishment, especially during this time. So if we could somehow post, here's our predicament, I'm sure that that alone would send a mass amount of people to raise their hand and say, I'm in for whatever I can do to help and support our children. And we can figure out a way to work around the constraints without doing anything that the district isn't allowed to do. I'm certainly not suggesting that. But I do think that, you know, if we're not able to publicly commit to helping because of our constraints, I think we should publicly commit to helping in a different way and, and allow the public to kind of come up and, and support us in this.
So we absolutely can do that. And, you know, this is a reminder of how central schools are to our, you know, community life. And it's a time like this that we realize it. And so absolutely, we certainly can and will do that, when and if the time is, becomes necessary to, to take that on. Absolutely.
And Mark, just a question. I know that in all of this, one of your early communications, you talked about how there's a community-wide kind of committee that's addressing coronavirus. And I believe it includes town governments, police, fire, school. And I don't know, is that scheduled to convene another meeting or?
So there is a COVID-19 task force.
Task force, thank you.
Yep, it's led by Chief Roy. And there was a meeting, not this past Friday, but a, a week ago. And it included Chief Courier, Chief Roy, Town Manager Cabanel, Town Counselor, Mrs. Healy, and, and then just other folks, important folks around the table. But I'm talking about the, the kind of the leadership of the town. And, and so because we're not a department of the town, you know, we have some discretion to, to operate the way we need to operate. But we have promised that, you know, when, when and if the time comes that the community of Merrimack, beyond the school district community, but the community of Merrimack needs support, I'm, I'm pleased to tell you that that group stands ready. I have not been informed of when there is an additional meeting. But we are, you know, I talked to Chief Roy twice Friday. And so, you know, we're in really close contact and I have no doubt that this town is well supported by that. If you're asking me, have I been informed today when the next meeting of that is, no. Because at the moment, you know, right now, my focus is on our school district community. And for the moment, that's enough. So we're going to rely on those other partners to, but I have no doubt that they will. They have shown their commitment to do it.
Excellent. Are there any questions from the phone? I'll start with you, Andy.
Yeah, so can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So the first is actually a statement. So right before the meeting, I was, there was a news report on Channel 9 that was talking, that was talking specifically about what, what Londonderry was doing. And, and one of the aspects I thought was interesting is that they were providing to parents that drove up free and reduced lunch, but also anyone that wanted to buy a lunch could for a dollar and 70 buy a lunch. So not somebody that qualified for free and reduced, but somebody that needed a lunch that they would normally get at school. So my suggestion is, if you could, is tomorrow to reach out to the administration of Londonderry and find out what they had to do to get through that. Because I think that type of approach might be a creative way for us to do something. That's more of a comment. The, the other, the other thing is there's.
If I could just, if I could just comment on that?
Andy?
Could I just comment on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I, I am not aware of what you're talking about and I certainly will reach out. But, you know, I want to just also say that local conditions, you know, vary. So I have, I wouldn't know what particular way that they're, you know, approaching that or whether they've got guidance, I don't have. But, you know, so that's all the more reason why I'll, you know, be in touch. But district to district comparisons right now are, are challenging. We've experienced that before. So, you know, I, we are operate, I certainly will speak to Londonderry. But remember that we are operating as we have always operated, under the guidelines that we're, that are shared with us. So we will, as you've said, you know, we'll, you've asked me to, you know, make our own moves on this. And I've agreed that there'll be a special meeting as early as this week, if such needs to happen. But I just want to make sure that right, that comparisons are, are difficult at a time like this. So that's all I'll say.
No, and, and that's fine. And, and I understand the position that you're in. It's just that it was a different approach than what I've heard from other ones. And it was just like within the last hour that I heard it. So it's just another data point for you to consider as you go and, and, and research this, based on what we've asked you to do. The other thing, what, there is a question. So that, one of the benefits of me being remote is I'm able, I'm actually watching the live stream. There's, there's like a, a minute delay, so I can't watch what we're doing immediately, but I'm able to do this. And there's actually a couple of questions that came in. I figured I'd take the opportunity to ask, because I think they're very pertinent questions that have come in. The first one is, early on, when you talked about how the elementary schools are going to be.
Andy, come in how?
Yeah.
Come in how? How did it come in via the live stream?
People ask questions on the, on the live stream, you're allowed to ask questions on the live stream that come in.
Okay, there's something we probably want to address. And since you are working as a board member right now, we are supposed to be deliberating the issues as a board. And when we're actually taking public testimony, they become active members of the deliberation. And that's, that's undue influence and that is probably questionable for ethic standards. So we, I, I understand and respect that you're, that there are questions being asked, but we cannot use them actively in our deliberations as we are under a live environment deliberating. So it's just like if constituents were texting us questions to ask at the board table as our own. It's, it's considered unethical.
Okay, so I did have a couple of questions that.
If they're yours, please do.
Okay, I'm scratching my head a little bit, but that's all right. Early on, when you were talking about the, the two, the different methodologies in terms of the way you're going to handle elementary versus the upper grades, power school in the upper and more hand distribution, if you will. For things that need to pass back and forth between students and the school, how is that going to be handled when they're not electronic?
So tomorrow, I'm going to, as John was saying a few minutes ago, tomorrow, I'm going to provide a communication to the school district community that's going to provide an answer to those logistical questions. And so I prefer to wait until tomorrow to answer that question. Not because we don't, you know, have a pretty fully vetted answer right now, but things will evolve tomorrow once the administrators begin. once the administrators begin to work with the teachers. So if you'd allow me just another almost 24 hours to be able to answer that question, my intent is to provide that detail tomorrow.
That's fine. It's just, as you mentioned, the governor talks about analog versus electronic, and I'm, I'm just curious how we are going to handle the analog, because with teachers being in the classrooms, parents may or may not be available to do things. It'll be really good to have a lot of clarity on how that's going to work.
We're going to, we're going to provide as much, you know, again, I just want to say, you know, we're going to provide, that's exactly what we've been trying to do and will continue to do. We're going, I mean, obviously, we have to give good communication to parents if we're going to rely on them to take possession of work that we're asking students to do, and we're going to be as clear as we can about that. And so of course clarity counts, and so that will all be in my message tomorrow. I just am reluctant to get ahead of ourselves tonight on something like that, because tomorrow is a very important day with administrators and teachers working out the final details of that very question.
Okay, that's fair enough. The other question I had is, it's kind of weird. So you taught, you made a very specific set of comments about instructors and teachers needing to be onsite to be able to collaborate and do the things that the teachers would do if they had a classroom full of kids. If you have teachers that for, you know, reasons of risk or things like that, don't feel comfortable being in the buildings, are you making accommodations for those sorts of situations?
Yes, however, those have to be dealt with, and this is, this is conversations that we've had with the leadership team as recently as today and will tomorrow. So this is, this is the place where I just have to say, schools have been put between a rock and a hard place right now, because we have a governor and a commissioner of education who have told us in no uncertain terms that teachers are to report to work, and that they are to commence remote instruction. That's what we've been told. So anybody who thinks that an individual superintendent is able to say, no, I don't agree, just does not know what they're talking about, because we've been told by the governor and the commissioner of education. Now, that's the rock, here's the hard place. We apparently can't go sit in a restaurant right now. And, and, and so there is illogic here, and I recognize the illogic. However, that is the situation that we're in. And so right now, teachers are paid, and our expectation is that they do the work for which they're paid, under unusual circumstances. There is no way to deliver remote instruction with teachers at home. Cannot happen. So at some point, if the state is concerned about this, they're going to have to provide greater clarity. Right now, all that we can do is do our best to ensure that teachers are provided opportunities to be in safe spaces, which we've done by eliminating students, meaning far fewer people to interact with, by ensuring that we have safe, cleaned, and sanitized facilities, and that they are allowed to use any technology capabilities that we have to correspond and collaborate with partners in order to accomplish that goal, or to just maintain social distancing the way they would in any other environment in which they will find themselves in the next few weeks. So that is the rock and the hard place. So in the case of a teacher who has any number of situations that would require special accommodations, those have to be dealt with on a case-by-case basis, and until we know differently, those folks would have to work with their building leaders to ensure that they can deliver their work product in a way that allows them to work remotely, but that is not the governor and the commissioner of education's current expectation, and so we're all operating under, under that guidance at the moment.
Okay, that's fair enough. That's all I had, Shannon.
Thank you, Andy. Naomi, do you have any questions or comments?
Of course, yes, just a couple.
Thank you.
I wanted, yes, I wanted to first say, Mark, your combined effort and frustration on this one shines through pretty clearly, even over the phone, and I wanted to make sure that we say more than once that your, and everybody's efforts are appreciated. I don't think anybody could plan for this, so we have to build it as we go, and that's going to mean there's going to be lack of coordination and other slumps along the way, but you're working as hard as a person can, and it's appreciated.
Thank you.
Now, two questions. First, you talked about curriculum, and you talked about food, and both of those are important. Schools do, as everybody's discovering, many, many things. I was curious, are there other, are there any other areas that have come forward where students receive a service or have a basic need met, or something of that sort, through the schools that we will also want to put into this, this wraparound that we're creating?
Can you, I just want to, so-
Things that are occurring to me randomly, nurses are involved, there are a variety of services that schools have.
Yep, so Heather, maybe you, a lot of what you're asking kind of involves the-
Related services.
Student services area, related services, right.
Yeah, so clearly, one of the goals in the next few days is to start investigating how one might deliver things such as social-emotional, individualized supports for students at home, potentially in the future as this moves along, if this were to go longer term, having remote platforms that people could use to run groups, or, you know, those kinds of things, social workers, counselors working with families and children, you know, we're really, everything's on the table. You know, nursing, that's an interesting question. There was today during the conference with the commissioner, it was made clear that schools need to have nurses available to redistribute medications back to families while their children are at home and not at school, able to access those medications at school. So that's something that's sort of on the front burners moving forward. Again, this is tricky and unprecedented, because much of what we do is face-to-face, people with other people. So figuring out how to deliver things is sort of front and center in, in a place where we have not done it in the past. This is not like we've had these platforms, I know you know that, so I know there's places around the country that are doing some of this work as part of their everyday work. This is not one of them, and most places are not prepared for this. So this, again, Naomi, will be, as we go along, those all, all of those services are potentially on the table. It's figuring out how we're delivering the what on the individual needs for specific children.
Great, thank you. Last question from me, because the folks who were there live covered most of mine marvelously. So we talked about the fact that we could meet, and we, as a board, of course, will be available whenever and whatever is needed, but are there any powers or things that might need to be done faster than we could approve for the students or such? Are there any things that in an extraordinary time, the administration needs to be able to do until they can contact us and get a vote?
I would, I would say at the moment, I can't contemplate what those might be. However, that could, that, that situations on the ground might change such that, you know, such that that might be necessary. What the, the governor, the commissioner, Edelblut, put forth the other day was a rule change through the State Board of Education that gives superintendents some different authorities than they normally would have, but most of those relate to remote learning. They don't necessarily relate to some of the things that I think you might be talking about. So I, you know, superintendents have some latitude, but particularly in the state of New Hampshire, cannot act unilaterally on a lot of things. And so most of the things that we would have to contemplate probably would require board approval, or at least board understanding. So I think that it might be that the board stands ready to meet multiple times for multiple reasons, and it might seem inefficient that we meet, let's say we meet Wednesday of this week to discuss food, and then Thursday, I might ask for yet another meeting to discuss something else that the board needs to take action on, to your point, Naomi, that's just kind of come up. And the question may be, well, why didn't that come up yesterday? You know, efficiency of time. And I would just tell you that, you know, if we can make that happen, we will, but things are moving at lightning speed. So I think that it's going to be the partnership which, which we have, which is that you're standing ready to help, and I'll stand ready to tell you what help we need. There's very little that I feel that I can do unilaterally to address kind of emergent crises that reveal themselves over the next few days. Remote learning is not in the category of an emergent crisis that I think you're talking about, and that's the only thing for which the commissioner has given us sort of broad authority.
Okay, well, I would, I would ask, if it does turn out that there's a, that the current rules and regulations and power lines that run from the school board to the administration, if as the weeks progress, it turns out that there's something in there that is harmful in this particular situation, it would be important to me to know about it, so that we could figure out how to give you the powers that you need to do, what you need to do for our students.
Thank you.
Brandy?
I, I think the timing of this is interesting, as we are exploring UDL and all that's coming into play with UDL, and it's, on one hand, I'm very proud of our work surrounding UDL, because I think it has helped support us in this new environment of learning. That being said, I, I'm really big on learning opportunities, and I look at this situation from my own family as a learning opportunity, but more importantly, I think for a district, this is completely uncharted territory, and not just for Merrimack, but for our country as a whole. I think what I, I would encourage, as we move through this process, it would be really helpful for the next generation of administration and board members and, you know, teachers and administrators, as we move through this process, to have a point of reference, because should in the future this happen, even if it was on a lesser scale, it would be essential to their practice and have some, some point of reference in the future. So as we move through this process, and I realize that I'm not, I'm vaguely asking for a documentation, but it doesn't need to be anything formal, it doesn't need to be, you know, here's a standard operating procedure in a pandemic environment for a school district. I am in no way, shape, or form suggesting that. However, I do think that as we move through this process, we're going to learn real quick what's worked, what hasn't worked, areas of weakness within our own district, areas of strength within our district, some little holes where we're like, oh, remember when we did X, Y, and Z? It would have been really great if we did this one little thing and we added that to our budget, or maybe there is a new technology that we really wish we added into our budget, but we chose not to because of our budget experience this year. Whatever it might be, I would love to have us, as we navigate these new waters, I would love to have those just written down, so that way, when the dust settles, when everything goes back to a typical day in Merrimack School District, we can reflect, and maybe even this summer, when hopefully things calm down, we can put together a SOP for, you know, our district of some sort. We can reflect on some areas of need, we can reflect on things that really did work, and maybe we should expand upon in our district. I just think that this is a great opportunity for us to learn ourselves about our own district, about what does work, what doesn't, and how we can improve that much more, especially as we're talking about UDL and SCL, because I think all of those things are really the foundation for what we're going to need as a district for all of us. I mean, literally, not just students, but teachers, administration, all of our staff members, bus drivers, I mean, you name it, everybody that is incorporated into our students' day, this is a huge opportunity of growth and learning. So I just would love to look at it like that and write it down as we go, so that way we have that point of reference.
I would have to say the first one that comes to mind from our pre-budget season, when we were kind of going over holistic ideas, is the one-to-one presentation Nancy Rose gave us.
Yeah.
Where will we be now if there was a one-to-one the first day of school? So, but that's just, you know, so, so thank you, Nancy, for opening our eyes to it, and sorry, Nancy, for not budgeting for it, so. But that was the first thing I thought of. John?
Bobby Menounas, thank you very much, and here, hearing a lot of what you had to say, and I think one of the things that we've done through this process is trying to control the message and control the information, and control it so it comes out with, you know, Mark's voice on it, and we've been, done a lot of work to funnel through him, as he said earlier, to our messaging tomorrow, we've been working on that now Friday afternoon, and then when things shifted over the weekend, we were in contact, and again today, with the administrative team. It's a, it's a group that has embraced UDL and SCL, and I think you, you said it both. I've been on the phone over the weekend, and again today, with Bill Wilmont, who you all met, who's a professional from CAST, who leads our UDL teams. He is offering up resources, and I agree, it will allow this district to try some things, try some new things around UDL, try some new ways of assessing kids, try some ways of bringing information to us. It's going to open our, our door and our window a little bit to look at more opportunities for our students, and we're trying to chronicle as much as we can as that happens. And a lot of it, I've asked to funnel through my office and through me and Mark, so we, we have that, and I mean, as we're sitting here, I'm watching messages from the principals as we speak, going out to all of them about tomorrow and their expectations, and what to have ready and bring, and where you're going. That's all happening as we speak right now. We've been staging this to go and launch, and it's kind of, Mark's email went out at five, and then RoboMessage went to all of our faculty to say, look at your email, and then now, repeated messages from the principals are going out right now. So we're staging all that and collecting all of that for that exact reason, and we had a very similar conversation about telling our story down the road around this experience. So thank you.
So if I- Yeah, absolutely, and then-
I'm sorry.
No, and so this next, but go ahead, wrap it up, absolutely.
So I just, so, thank you as well. This is a nice time to tell just a little story about our team that people might not know. You know, people know their principal and their local administrative teams, but they don't know, so if you're a Thornton's Ferry parent, you know Thornton's Ferry, but you don't know Reed's Ferry. And today was an example of, you know, and I don't want to sound too dramatic about it, but we have an extraordinary leadership team. Those people came today, now, they've all got parents, they've got children, they have their own worries, their own thoughts. I do, I have a child at Nashua South and a young adult in college, and we all do. But these people came today, and they didn't talk one minute about their families or their worries, they took care of the children and the students in this town in a way that would make you proud. And I will also tell you that through the weekend, I was bombarded with forwarded messages from teachers to principals, who then forwarded them to me, about all the thinking they've done this weekend, about things like, we could do this, I think we should have this ready, can't wait for Tuesday to, to share what I'm thinking about this, lists of, have you thought of, what about, can anybody weigh in on this? To the very point you make, our teachers, our teachers in this town have embraced this challenge, and they're doing exactly that. Wish we thought of this sooner, wish, you know, glad we thought of this now, can't wait to talk to you, so rest assured that that kind of what I'll call like a forensic- So rest assured that that kind of what I'll call like a forensic analysis of this whole thing is already underway and will continue to be underway. But it matters that people know, having just come off a budget season, that, you know, this school district is led by really, really outstanding committed people who lead outstanding and committed teachers. And that's just a fact. And yeah, I am biased, but I'm not blind. I know when, when things aren't good, and we call it out. But, you know, I'm telling you who we've got in this town. And so they are already metacogitating on this issue. And we will have lots to say about it in the future. So thanks for setting that stage.
I just want to add that in no way, shape, or form could a test score or a position on a scale of NICH and School Digger. Take any of what we're experiencing now and all that you just mentioned about how our teachers are dedicated through the weekend and sending their information to their principals and all that's going on behind the scenes to ensure our kids' needs are met in this new era of learning. I'm not saying that other districts aren't experiencing that same level, but I'm proud that our district isn't just, you know, going by the, the minimal standards that we are doing not only what our governor has asked us to do and the DOE has asked us to do, but we're raising the bar on so many different levels for our students. And none of that, not one element of that, has a thing to do with a test score or a thing to do with a School Digger and NICH rating on the internet. So I just had to say that really quick.
Yeah, and I was just about to say thank you. I knew the conversation is kind of coming, winding down. And I wanted to thank you for all of the work and say that, acknowledge that I know this is a 24/7 job for so many of the people working. I know you're, it's late at night, early in the morning, and lost sleep and all of that. And for, for our leadership team, I thank each and every one of you for what you're doing to try to deliver the individualized plans and, and the work that you're going to be going through. Thank you in advance. I'd like to thank our teachers. They are a big source of our success with our students. And furthermore, I'd like to thank in advance our parents and our students for collectively the flexibility that we are all going to need and the ability to adapt in a very unreal, a very surreal time. And it's not going to be easy, and it's going to get worse before it gets better. As a board member, and I would think I can speak on behalf of the board, is I think we fully recognize that there are going to be bumps in the road, there will be mistakes, there will be frustrations with some people in our community. And I just ask our community, our parents and our kids to be patient with us too and know that we're trying to do our best in providing and delivering the education that kids are going to need in a, in a way that is really not conducive and ideal for the instruction that our young learners need. So thank you all, and I know that as information comes up, you'll continue to let our, our community know and our parents and our children on what the expectations are and also how we can better help them. I'd also like to know if Joanna has any questions. She sits here quietly, and you're more than welcome to speak. But if you had any comments or questions you wanted to make, you could feel free, you know, please feel free to address them.
I didn't know if any of these were going to be answered in tomorrow's like mass message, but one concern that a lot of students have been like texting me about over the past weekend is that at the secondary level, there had been like textbooks and materials that they had left at the school. And so like with Power School Learning being like the main form of remote learning, would there be an opportunity for them to collect those materials at a point?
Joanna, thank you for that question. That will be in the message tomorrow. When I talked about kind of those that have been in other particular needs that there'll be for classrooms, that's exactly what the needs will be that I referred to. It's a pretty exhaustive list that the, the administration today was working with me. I was working with, you know, Mr., Mrs. Putney, Mr. Zampieri, Mr. Bergeron. And I sat with them, we talked about kind of the how that's going to happen. To give a little more information, they're going to stage it with certain times for people to pick up because it's a mass, it's a big school, and there's a lot there. And then they'll stage kind of what the needs are and then how to pick them up. And that's going to take some effort by a lot of hands on deck. And they don't have the hands on deck yet to speak to, to arrange that. So tomorrow morning, that's one of their tasks to accomplish, to come up with that more solidified plan that I can communicate to Dr. McLaughlin, that he can put out to the public and do that. But that is a certain concern because a lot of students that it is still textbook-driven or project-driven that you've already started or accomplished to especially some more of our, of our more advanced classes, there's a lot to that. And, and we understand that, recognize it. We had a, a, we utilized Zoom today and had a conference call with all of the department heads in the, in the, in the high school at one time. And again, with the three administrators, and we talked a lot about, so think about what you need. And that's kind of what tomorrow's more exhaustive list will be about. What do we actually need to get to students? And what is, what is going to be that? And then how do we get them to, is going to be the next stage of that. So thank you for your question.
Yeah, thank you for your effort.
Yeah, I actually had a couple of questions when you wrapped, so.
Just a side, just a side comment, which is about, she just made me think, when we're looking at our page for questions, we may want a particular link to direct students and how they can ask their questions. You know, do they go to a particular teacher? Do they go to whoever they're comfortable with? Or is there a way that we want to centralize it with building administration? So.
Thank you.
So I have a couple of questions. I think some are very, they're, they're more specific, I think. We were talking about turning in work, and you mentioned Blizzard bags. I'm glad you did because that's exactly what my mindset was. And when it comes to the fact that we now have a remote learning environment under a state of emergency directed by the governor, do we have the same kind of constraints about a certain percent of work under like a, I call it the Blizzard bag rule, needs to be completed to give the day credit?
So, John, please?
So there, under the new rules of this, it was, I, I talked about the three, the three criteria that, that Commissioner Edelblum put forward. And it really was around learning opportunities was the first one, to provide learning opportunities. The second was to provide them at a level of rigor that was equal to what they would learn in the classroom. And the third was when they are assessed. Those are the three criteria. There was no, in the emergency order.
So how much of it, like?
Number that's returned or things like that. The returning aspect was not there, and that's why I talked a lot about UDL. We're going to use opportunities through this for different ways of assessing completion and doing some of this. So can I give you a lot of detail of what exactly it looks like? No, that's why we need our teaching staff back to let them design some of that.
Sure.
John, could you just say what those three are again?
Provide learning opportunities, that's the first one. The second one is to have equal rigor to what's that, what's taught in the classroom.
Okay, now, just if you could just talk, so that, that's, that's a funny standard. I mean, I'm, you know, I, we just got to get real. This has been, this, so, that is not possible. All right, so I, you know, and it matters, I'm, I'm really, I'm not meaning to be humorous here because it's really deadly serious. But what we deliver to students in the classroom is not going to be replicated in this remote learning environment. And what concerns me is that when people hear that, anything that feels different to them from what they, whether you're a student, I mean, Joanna, you're going to know very quickly the difference between what your experience has been in the classroom and what remote learning is going to look like. And that is not because we're not trying very, very hard to have really serious work and instruction provided, but it's not going to be equally rigorous. So, you know, I think we just have to be real about a few things, and that would be one. So I'm glad that John read those, but I think setting expectations is important. And again, I'm not trying to suggest in any way that we're not going to try. But we know there's a difference, and so we just have to acknowledge it. So, thank you.
Well, I think the classroom dynamic and engagement creates the depth of the content and the understanding because of the exchange. We're not going to have that.
Right.
The second question was about, since we're in a state of emergency, not knowing the end game, we know what the initial deadline for returning to school is, but of course, we know everything is fluid. And so what does this mean for the 180 days of instruction that we always talk about as the requirement from the state?
So I asked that question specifically today. There was a teleconference with Commissioner Edelblut and superintendents across the state. And so there was an opportunity for a chat. And so you typed your chat questions in, and he went one by one by one. And I asked that question, and I've been asking that question. I mean, I'm certainly not the only person in my position who wonders that on behalf of their students as well. So the way that I understand it at present is that if we do due diligence in providing learning opportunities for students from now through, let's say, April 3rd, that all of those days count towards the 180 days. What I wasn't able to get a solid answer from, and I understand why, is that if we go past April 3rd, it might be a new reality. So if we can return to school by April 3rd, that, and if we were a district that didn't do anything, and there is no district I'm aware of in New Hampshire who's taking that action, so everybody's working really hard. But if you happen to be a district that just didn't, then you would have to make up this time. But if you're a district that is, and we are, then, then we are on track for the last day of school to be what it was intended to be. However, the caveat is after April 3rd, if things haven't changed, then we'll have to, the commissioner will have to revisit that and what that means for all of us. And certainly, if I get any information about that, I'll share it. But I expect at that point, that'll become bigger than local superintendents to share. That would become something at the state level to, to share. And what that could look like for mitigation, you know, let's say to provide students like yourself at critical times in your school life, that's going to have to be worked out. And we will certainly partner with the state on that. But I don't, I don't know at the moment, past April 3rd.
Okay. I have another very specific one because it's coming up sort of, it's coming up inside the window of our closure. And specifically for juniors, SATs are scheduled for March 25th. And that was the assessment for the junior class for state regulations. And have you gotten any feedback on how that will be managed at any point yet?
So that question may have been asked by a super, it was not asked by me today, but it may have been asked by a superintendent today. If it was, I missed it. So I don't know the answer to that question right now. The reason I didn't ask that question today is that some time ago, I'm going to say within about a week, my understanding was that, that, that is a known problem. By that, by known, I mean known to state officials, and that we were in a waiting mode. So my assumption was that since I've not heard that we were still in a waiting mode. Now, I don't know if I missed something in today's conversation. And I'll certainly follow up on that, but maybe John has.
Yeah, that is accurate. I received communication about, about that through my, through my central region of curriculum instruction and superintendents, and that we are in a holding pattern right now. They've got to determine what to do with part assessments and state assessments right now.
Okay. And then I'm just going, I'm going to go national, since I'm working my way up the food chain. And that's that a number of our seniors and juniors are taking AP classes, and that's on a national level delivered the same day. And since we're in a national crisis, I know it's not something we have to address tonight, but that's something that I think those that are taking those courses and are going to be interested in knowing what the, what the end game will be for that if, if we have this kind of delivery of instruction.
So I don't know if anybody cares to know this, but I have a, you know, again, I, I have a personal interest in that answer too, because I have a son who's currently in an AP class, and he is wondering too. And he, I think he thinks that I have like this information that I'm just not sharing with him. So I don't know the answer to that. The College Board is the authority in charge of making that decision. I have no doubt that they are inundated with questions from people like me and people like you and people like my son. And I have no doubt that they're, you know, their lack of an answer right now, I don't assume is lack of interest or trying. I think it's that, like them, like us, some of these things are kind of like, you know, it's like a, a new dawn, and you're like, wow, this is, this is this today, and now this is this today. And it just seems to keep growing in magnitude in terms of its impact on operations, not just school operation. So it's an excellent question. And once again, I'm going to rely on the state to take the lead on advocating for its students with the College Board. And, and then we will, you know, provide you with whatever information we can whenever we get it. These are real, these are real concerns. And I'm looking at you, Joanna, but I know that all your friends are the same way. And I'm sure you're just really nervous. And I, I wish that I could make that not be so, you know. So, but we're just going to, you know, do our best to give you information. Because information is, even if it's not, even if the answer is not great, it, knowing is better than not knowing, whatever the answer is. So, you know, well, and I, and I love what was suggested about providing a, a place for students to enter their own questions, which may be very different from what their parents are concerned about. And so we'll, we'll work on that, and, and over the next days, we'll try to share that out too.
Well, those are my questions. I echo the sentiment of the board, thank you for all the hard work. The nights, the weekends, God forbid there's a holiday thrown in there, you'd be working then too. But on that note, we know that's been tireless. It's probably exhausting work. And again, trying to keep up with the current events is, is an impossible task. But you've, you've done it with grace and with the communication that this community really has been looking for, and, and we appreciate that, so. So on that note, it is what it is for right now, more to come. But again, we're ready to, to meet at a moment's notice, you just give us the word. So thank you, and thank you Heather for coming out. We are on to item number four, which is presentation of the 2020, 2021 School District Calendar. And back with you.
I'm delighted to talk about something else.
I bet you are.
For just a few minutes. And this is forward thinking, because this is about next year and new beginnings. So just as a way to set the stage, so whenever, most districts, I can only speak to our district, whenever our district has presented a calendar, we've done a number of things. One thing we've done is we have asked our two associations, our Support Staff Association and our Professional Staff Association to weigh in on their preferences. Over the last many years, the board has crafted its own questions for the community and then put those out and give an opportunity for the community to respond. In addition, we take into consideration when particularly the state of Massachusetts has its vacations, so that we are careful not to have our vacations coincide with theirs. And also, we've got partner districts in New Hampshire with whom we collaborate, let's say CTE centers and tech, and so, so all of those, all of those parts need to kind of come together. So the calendar that you had in your packet is a combination of all of that data. So I'll just walk you through a couple, a couple of things here. One is that for the last number of years, we've had what we've called August Academy, which is three days of professional development training before school starts. So typically, on that week, in the last many, many years, we've had, the first day of that week is by contract, teachers in their classroom, that's by contract, to set up. And then Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of that week have been our August Academy, three days of concentrated professional development. been our August Academy, three days of concentrated professional development. Then, on the last day of that week, we have had staff meetings in preparation for the beginning of school. Then we have a weekend and Labor Day, and school starts the day after Labor Day. That's how it's been for the last number of years. This year, if I had a penny for every time I've said this lately, but this year's a little different. And part of the reason that it is, is because we have an election year. So, we have a primary, a state primary election coming on September 8th this year. And in conversation with the town moderator, we thought that it would not be optimum to have school on that day. So, that could have been, let's say, an option of the first day of school, but it would be bad business to have a town election, even if you had a low turnout, on the day that buses roll for the first time, and little kindergarteners are trying to figure out where they're going, and then a bunch of people they'd never seen before are going into their same building. So, that's off the table. So, so what that means is that we're not able to have a typical August Academy, because we also have a general election on November 3rd. And so, that's going to be another day off. And so, and we have a particularly late Labor Day this year. So, all of those things combined to create a need to have a little bit of a different situation. So, what the, what the thought is, is that on August 31st, we would have a teacher prep day. That's the day that their teachers are required by contract to have to set up their classes. On August 1st, we have a staff meeting day...
September 1st.
I'm sorry, September 1st. Thank you. September 1st, we have a staff meeting day, and all those days are outlined in red. We have a staff meeting day, which is required to, you know, have teachers work with their principals to get things up and running, and IEP teams to meet and to talk, and so on and so forth. In yellow, therefore, what we'd be suggesting is that September 2nd would be the first day of school this year. And that, by the way, was the majority of our parent responders preferring that start date. That also aligns with what the teachers had indicated. So, anyway, then we have, and this is a proposal, and this is what the board certainly can, is going to weigh in on. Then, we have a, so school is Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of that week. Then, the 7th is Labor Day, that's LD, so that's a day off. And then, what we're proposing is that the next day is off anyway, because that is the primary election day. And we would call that a teacher workshop day. So, rather than, if we have to be off anyway, let's not take another day off for teacher workshop. So, our first workshop day this year would be on the general election day. That would be September 8th. So, the rest of September is what it is. October 11th, October 12th, rather, was the preference of the community to have off Columbus Day. So, that would be the only day in October. November, and here might be the area that the board wishes to talk a little bit. So, I'll just walk you through what the logic is, and then more than happy to hear your feedback. So, November 3rd is the general election day. So, two things factor in here, particularly the younger students, but I think in general, all students, but particularly younger students. We hear, and John is a former elementary principal, can say, stops and starts are very hard routine-wise for, for particularly our younger learners. So, if we have to stop on the 3rd because of the general election, and because we would like to try to have something approaching what we had with August Academy, which is days together, because what we typically find is one-off professional development days aren't really as effective as they are when we can have concentrated time. So, see you tomorrow is better than see you in April. And so, what we thought was, it's a modification of our August Academy when we had three days together. So, we would set the stage and have a really productive day on September 8th for professional development, and then forecast what would happen in November for those two days together. And then you avoid a coming to school on Monday, stopping on Tuesday, and then having the rest of the week, because the following week, on November 11th, is the federally mandated Veterans Day. And then you have the week of the 16th, and then the next week, you're off for Thanksgiving, starting on the 23rd, which was the preference of the community to have no school on the 23rd. So, that would be one area where I could expect, understand if the board wanted to discuss, but I'm just trying to share with you what the logic is in having those days back to back. Then, excuse me, the 24th and 25th, obviously for Christmas, and then the following week till Friday, the 1st of January. And then, the only other day in January would be Martin Luther King Day, which again, was the preference of our community to have off. And it's a very important day, and I think it's excellent that we acknowledge it. Then, February is the February break, starting the week of the 22nd, which does not coincide with Massachusetts, and does, I believe, does coincide with our partners, so that we're not off when they're on, and therefore, kids don't know where to go. March is a empty month. April, April break. May, the only day that we're required to take is Memorial Day. That's a federal holiday. Given that schedule that's here before you, the last day of school in this context would be June 18th, with five days in the following week as makeup days. So, there's much of this calendar that you see before you is responsive to the community's data that they provided to us. And with the, so it's, it's not really that much different than what the community was asking for, but I do recognize that the November 2nd, teacher workshop day, is something that you may want to talk about and happy to do it.
So, Brandy's hand up already?
I definitely do, because November, the amount of learning in November is, the amount of days in school is minimal in comparison to like March. So, I'm wondering a couple of things. The first is, does it make sense to move it to later in the year? And I say that not, I'm guessing the answer's going to be no, because it's better to have those teacher workshops in the beginning of the school year, rather than after the holidays, would be my guess. But without ever attending, one, I'm not 100% sure exactly how you would use those days, given this model. So, if it is an option to move it into the spring, I would like to see that. If it's not, I was wondering if it would be possible to do something like a Thursday and Friday, so October 1st and 2nd, let's say, and then we have Monday off. So, you go into a long weekend situation with Columbus Day, and then you start fresh on the 13th. So, you move it into another, or even like in January, but depending on how you use that time, if it makes more sense to do it in the beginning of the school year, rather than in the spring, I would like to see it more in the October for second range.
So, we're open to anything that the board wishes. So, no, nothing is impossible. You know, I've expressed how it's, the value that we've seen in days that are together. However, we really can be flexible. We've had, so in my first, probably, well, in every other job I've had prior to Merrimack, we had, you know, a model where you'd have like a professional development day in September, and then one again, probably in January, and then one again in November. That, I mean, in April. That's typically how it's gone. And that's how it was in Merrimack for my first number of years. And then we evolved to this, because, because there are limitations to that, because by the time you get geared up and then geared down, you know, the amount of quality time you have is limited, and we really make good use of these days. So, to have days together, it just, we've seen impact. However, we're nothing if not flexible. And I get your point. And so, if that were the preference, then we could move it to March, which has no days. We will make, I mean, John is in charge of this now, and I have no doubt that he will make great use of whether there are, it's one day and then two days, or one, one and one. So, we'll follow the board's lead on that.
I think just to add to what Mark said, you know, I'm detailed, and my wheels always spin, and that's one thing about, that I am. So, I have some thoughts and ideas about those days. And when I, when Mark showed me this dilemma this year, and the different kind of calendar, and the late holiday, and the election day, he said, well, what can we do to get what we still need out of this? And I, and that's why I advocated for those days. The only reason for November, because it's trying to take advantage of the election day, instead of prolonging our calendar to go to, not to that, to that second, but last week in, in June, it was to say, how do we utilize that day and still do what we want as a compromise? And that would be, do it in November, and use one day, which we're going to be off anyhow because of the election, and then utilize that Monday, because Mark mentioned this already, but some of the, if we probably went back and looked at attendance on those days when we have Tuesday off in the middle of, in the middle of November or December, anywhere else, and you have a Monday, it typically turns into a long weekend for a lot of our, our families anyhow. And versus saying, well, if that's going to be the case, because of that split, why not utilize that time? Say, go off for a long weekend, and we'll take our staff, do what we've done in the past, go off campus, do two days of solid unified learning around a topic, and then come back and engaged on that Wednesday. That was the thinking behind it.
I just wanted to say, I support the calendar as it is.
And I'm a little of the mindset of Brandy, because again, it's just, there's not a lot of instruction. But I actually, my, my thoughts are a little more scandalous. And that is, we have committed to not have school the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, but it's not, it's the one day that's truly not a holiday. So, having that, and I know it's, when we surveyed the teachers, they were very interested in having that day off. But if that was a teacher workshop day, where the students aren't there, the teachers are, so it's teacher workshop, so the families still get that three-day block, because historically, we always look at that Wednesday as a day of poor attendance. And that's why we've always elected to, we've always leaned even before our surveying, to have that day not be in service of the district. So, that was the only, I call scandalous twist I put on, on my mindset, but I'm not necessarily sold to the idea. Cindy?
I mean, I, I don't support that. And it's nothing, it's just that I know that our teachers, you know, need to travel to family time, and it's going to really put some of them in a crunch, and maybe even, some of them may not even be able to make it home to be with their families. And so, I really don't want to put our teachers in that situation, particularly because it has kind of, it's been a pattern over the last few years. I think they've come to expect it, and I think they've appreciated the fact that they can be with their families. So, for that reason, I just, and the same thing with families, that, well, I guess if the students still had off anyways...
They would have off.
Yeah. No, but I mean, for that, for that, I think, I, I'm not comfortable asking our teachers to do that.
I did say it was scandalous. I prefaced.
It's all for the sake of brainstorming, right?
Right, absolutely.
Yep.
Brandy?
Then, my only other question would be, could we attach it to, like, I, I just feel that it would be better to add it to a day that we're already having off. So, if we're going to have off those three days in November for Thanksgiving, does it make sense, and I'm, I'm not even a fan of this, but putting the 23rd and 24th as days off for kids, only because it's Thanksgiving, I think it might add some pressure to the teachers even then. But if we have the Martin Luther King Day off, does it make sense to just add the 19th and 20th to that? Or, again, adding it, moving it into March? I just, November, I just feel like it's, it's just got so many days off already.
Well, the 3rd, because we're going to want that to teach a workshop, because it's election day, and we have to close school because of the sheer volume we're going to have in our buildings. Same with the 9th for state primary, because it's, again, going to be a, a big election for all of our state officials. So, those make sense. Honestly, you know, as we're playing with the numbers, we keep adding days to the end of the year if we, if we add days other places. So, like, if you made the, around Martin Luther, I think it's Martin Luther, or take the first two days of the Thanksgiving, we can just give it the whole week, you'd still be taking the 3rd off for the elections. That would add two days. Then add another day to the end of the year, and you'd be at the 21st.
Yeah.
So, I, I would not want to add one more day to June. That's the one thing, any decision we make to add one more day to June is already late. And again, if we do get five snow days, the last day will be the 25th of June already.
So, what I, what I would, and just to...
I was trying to trim it. That's what I was trying to do.
So, what I, what I would reiterate what Chair Barnes just said is, September 8th, we're trying to leverage, because, because to try to achieve the goal of getting out at a decent time in, in June. So, we're not going to have a no-school day and not do something around teacher workshops. That doesn't make any sense at all. So, September 8th is a, is a no-school day because of election, so we're going to have that as a teacher workshop. Likewise, November 3rd has to be a teacher workshop for the same reason. So, really, what you're talking about is, is one additional day. Right now, we have it scheduled for the 2nd of November. So, so it's perfectly reasonable to move that anywhere you would wish. I look particularly at March as being, you know, a very open month, and, and it's certainly doable. I, I would tell you right now, it would not be ideal from the professional development perspective. But I'm just, you know, I'm sharing what, what my sense of it is, having, having led August Academy for years. And the only other thing, I just want to make sure that I properly reflect, is what our principals say, which is that stops and starts are tricky. So, if we came to school on the 2nd, and then had off the 3rd, and then attended 4, 5, and 6, and then came back 9 and 10, and then had off the 11th, and then 12 and 13, and then you have one full week, and then two days, I mean, November is always kind of tricky, because, you know, at, at its best, you have, you know, Veterans Day and, you know, and Thanksgiving. And this year, again, is a unique challenge, because we have, you know, two elections. Not, not to mention that we have an election as we do every year in April, but we don't have any precedent for taking that day off, nor do we need to. But just saying that, you know, this is a year where we have, you know, it's an election year. So, we won't be having these necessarily same challenges a year from now. So, this is, but we're happy to...
Okay. This is good. Honestly, you're, you're bringing me back your way anyway every time you talk, Mark. On that note, let me go to the phone. Naomi and Andy. Andy, do you have any thoughts on the calendars presented?
No, you guys have picked up all the points I was thinking of, so I'm good with where we're standing.
Okay, thank you. And Naomi?
No, I think that the board members who are parents are the, the most to stand this one.
Yep. And I think the stops and starts, though, you've probably had to experience in your own classroom experience. So, I, I would definitely, you know, I take that for what, for what it's being presented to. So, honestly, I can't find a good way of making that day up and, and bringing forth the, you know, because again, you're, you're talking about stops and starts, and, and, you know, every day after Memorial Day, when the sun is out and the grass is green again, is also a challenge for, for instruction. So, but I don't think there's a win-win based on just the calendar. And it, really, it's all about elections. I mean, we open our, we open our buildings to the election, the election boards, and that's really what's designing some of these challenges. So, it's not the curriculum that's, that's driving this. It's, it's being a good community steward, that is. And sometimes you do that at a cost. And I think that's exactly what this is. So, I know it's not the ideal, and you probably have given us something more ideal, had an ideal option been presented to us to be able to manage this. But when student safety's being considered, you know, impact on operations being considered, I think you gave us the best of what you could with what you had. And to that, I'd be willing to go with the flow. But I definitely want to vet if there's any way of getting around that, that Monday... any way of getting around that, that Monday before Election Day in November, just so we didn't have so many days out of service in the month of November. That would have been something to consider, but I just don't know how we're gonna do that, and let you, get you to deliver what you're trying to deliver as well. So at the end of the day, you do have that skin in the game, and the outcomes are, are on you, so I, I can live with it. Any other thoughts? So with that, I don't think we need to vote on it. It is what it is. So if, if it's the will of the board, this will be the calendar for the upcoming year. So thank you for all your hard work, and it was not an easy task, but I'm glad we got to kind of vet the options as well, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Oh goodness. We are on to Johanna's, number five. Do you want to read this one, Johanna? Do you want to read that number five for us? Please do.
Merrimack High School graduation date.
Thank you. Back to you, Mark.
Fantastic. Oh, Johanna, breaking my heart. So Principal Sharon Putney is requesting that we set a graduation date for June 13, 2020. So obviously, given our first agenda item, I would tell you that as much as I wished very much to be able to say with certainty that that is gonna be the case, I can't. I think it's very possible that it could be, particularly, again, if- Particularly, again, if we're able to begin school again on April 3rd, then this is the date. If that isn't the case, then again, it's going to be a much bigger conversation, and, and we'll certainly keep you posted. And I, you know, I feel terrible that, you know, and not just our seniors, but seniors across the country, and college seniors. I mean, you never get your senior year back, and it, it, I, you know, it's really, I just feel, anyway, we all do. So, so that's what Principal Putney has asked, and I'm hoping very much that we can gather on a beautiful summer day, and throw up the balls, and have a great day, and, and move on. That's the goal, so, so June 13th.
Well, I'm hoping it's still spring, because that's June 13th. The first day of summer's June 20th.
There you go.
We don't want that.
There you go. Right, right, right. So that's, that's-
So best-case scenario, most likely, but not guaranteed. That's, that's what I'm hearing.
Right.
Okay. I want more fanfare for you, I really do.
I can speak for the entire class, so we're just glad that we're still talking about graduation, because there's been a lot of jokes about graduating online, so.
That's what I love about students, because you can find humor and work through it, and so we're gonna rely on that, so thank you.
Ceremony on Instagram.
Thank you.
So on that note, we are on to the housekeeping portion of the show, which is the approval of the March 2nd, 2020 minutes, made by Cinda, seconded by Brandy. Are there any edits to the minutes? Seeing none? We have to do roll call, because this is a vote. Brandy, how do you vote?
In favor.
Cinda?
In favor.
Naomi?
In favor.
Andy?
In favor.
And I vote in favor. The motion carries 5-0-0. On to other correspondents, the correspondence come for the board, I do have a couple. A parent reached out to me regarding questions on having trouble getting power school access, and got her in touch with the proper administration at the high school, and she is all set. I got a question on the coronavirus and field trips, and sent that person to our new coronavirus webpage, which is seu26.org/coronavirus. We got an email asking if we were missing a bench, because they found one at Wildcat Falls and thought it might be ours. And that was, administration was copied on that, so actually, I think it was you, Mark. And, you know, bench hunting is one of your new hobbies on the side when you're not doing coronavirus stuff, so. And then there's a question about athletic budget numbers, and Matt Chevill answered, so thank you for that work. So was there any other correspondence to come before the board? Seeing none? Are there any comments from the board? Seeing and hearing none on the phone, I'm saying, taking that as a no. We'll go into item number eight, which is new business. Is there any new business to come before the board? Seeing none? We've had a lot of new business, haven't we? And number nine is committee reports. Are there any committee reports from the board? Professional Development did meet on the 12th, went through basically the different requests for reimbursements, continuing credits, graduate credits, and we went through a couple of appeals as well for reimbursements, and we are meeting again next month. So I will tell you that Parks and Rec this Wednesday is canceled. So just if there are any updates that you're looking for from Parks and Rec, their Facebook page and their website are always constantly updated. Not feeling all that confident we're gonna get the skate park, or the ice skating rink back this, this year, because it's been pretty mild. And then look for updates on their activities, such as the Easter egg hunt, which comes up every year, because obviously in this environment, it's all fluid. I'm sure it's, it's townwide these days. So without that meeting, cannot give you definitive updates. Any other committee reports? Seeing none? Public comments on agenda items? Anyone from the public that would like to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
My name's Lori Peters. I'm at Seven Newton Street. I want to say, as a teacher in another town, I recognize that going to the remote learning being very hard. As a department head, spending my weekend discussing options, Zoom, merging Google Classroom, all those things, I recognize how difficult that is, especially aligning IEP and 504 students. And I, I applaud the amount of work that you've done. However, I am disappointed with the district's handling of the free meals. Districts around us have stepped up and are providing meals regardless of waivers. They're providing them to all students, Londonderry, Nashua, Concord. I recommend that you get on the phone and you find out what they're doing. Don't wait for the waivers. There's children that may not have had meals today. And there are a large number of people who've blown up Facebook, asking what we can do, and we're waiting for you to tell us, we can't do it, or you're gonna do it, because we're willing to step up. But we recognize that the best place for these families to get their meals are from the place they are accustomed to it, and that is through the schools. And so I really don't think this can wait another day or two, because these are children that aren't getting fed. And there are other children who may not, there, you've seen the store shelves, they're empty. People who didn't get to the store, there may be children who don't qualify for free or reduced, that we could provide meals to, because their families are short on food, because their parents couldn't go, and now there's nothing left. And so I think these districts, instead of waiting for the, the state or the DOE to answer the waiver questions, they've just stepped up and done exactly what you gave as a potential recommendation, for the board to say, we're moving this money in the general fund to feed anyone who wants to come and get a lunch, so that we can make sure no one goes hungry during this time.
If there's no one else, we will close public comments on agenda items? I thought I saw a movement, I didn't, okay. So we will take a moment to sign the manifest, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn, made by Cinda, seconded by Brandy. Brandy, how do you vote?
In favor.
Cinda?
In favor.
Andy?
In favor.
Naomi?
In favor.
And I vote in favor. The motion carries 5-0-0. Thank you and good night.